Call's meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be leading the pledge by Ms. Paula Barnes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just for all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. If it's okay with the board, do something a little bit different tonight before we can jump into our actual meeting. If we could have a moment of silence tonight. One of our former principals, Mr. Melvin Daniels, passed away, I believe, Saturday afternoon. And I believe his services are this Saturday, I believe, at noon.
Well, the service for-
The funeral.
...the station is Friday evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eaks. Most of you know he served the system in different capacities and I believe his last capacity was Luverne High School, I think, the principal. Is that correct?
Well, he was assistant. He was at Sturts Creek Middle and with Holloway.
Okay.
You know.
So if we could remember his family. And also, another one of our employees, Mr. Jeff Stacy. His father passed away and I believe it'd be Ms. McCloud's father-in-law. Is that correct?
He actually worked for us for a while doing fingerprinting over here. Mister, the gentleman that passed away did some of that for us.
So if we could have just a minute or so, just to remember these people. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Strategic plan, I guess, is what we're here for tonight. And we're going to hear from Mr. Oldham and the staff. And I imagine some board members probably have a few questions as we go along. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Oldham.
I'm going to step up there tonight, I think. You can't hurt somebody. Kind of look. Look at each other, please. Okay. James, if you could put up kind of that first sheet, if you would, first. Kind of as an introduction to what we're looking at. Did you put it in the PowerPoint form or how did you do it? Okay, that's it then, okay. Kind of as an introduction to what we're doing. There are school districts all over the country have strategic plans. Some very, very involved, some not as involved. And ours, I think our first attempt to go into this was not to try to encompass everything. But I want it, just some things I want to kind of say while we're doing this, kind of the process for it. And part of it goes back to the professional learning community environment that we operate under. And it's for our principals, for our teachers, and for us. One of the statements that they make in professional learning communities is collaborative teams whose members work interdependently to achieve a common goals linked to the purpose of learning for all. Interdependently, that we have to depend upon each other. And so that's part of the process that we're talking about. Taking the collective knowledge of everybody and putting it together to accomplish the goal of learning for students. Your mission statement, of course, is prepare today's students for tomorrow's opportunity. So that means that we need to develop a vision for the students that, and when you stop and think about this, that student that's in second grade and third grade, it's a decade before they graduate. So when we're talking about, we have to have the ability to look down the road, what changes, what things can we put in place maybe, to try to prepare these students. We're looking over a relatively long period of time when you put it in kind of that perspective. So the strategic plan is Rutherford County's written plan to look forward, identify elements that could impact our mission statement relating to delivering services, and to prove efficiency, that to maximize the funding, as that's an issue. We do have still, and we have a visit coming this fall from Advanced Ed, our accreditation service, you know, will be here. And so we do have that plan. But for this strategic plan, I have asked, kind of as our first attempt into this, to bring our assistant superintendents along with our community and relations coordinator together to look at something that we could do that would be a little bit more overarching, a little bit different than what we do on the Advanced Ed plan. I think if this works out well for us in future additions, we may want to broaden these participants to maybe some elected officials and maybe some community members and that sort of thing. But I thought with our first one, let's looking at it, let's kind of look and see how this works for us, what we want to incorporate in it, and then think about how we can expand that, if there's something we want to do. One of the primary reasons, like that third paragraph, it's a team vision, give us now direction to develop budget policies and issues to meet our mission. It's a plan. It's not a comprehensive. A strategic plan is different from a comprehensive plan. And what we want to do is look at it, refine it. My suggestion to you probably this evening is we take your suggestion, this is your plan. We're just bringing a draft forward to do. But that we take a look at it, add things, edit tonight, possibly then re-print it to you, and bring it back. And you can approve it at a subsequent meeting this month, if you'd like to, go ahead and get it in place. I really think this board is the one that needs to look at, because you've been, I mean, you've developed a budget for this year, you've been involved for multiple years in doing this. So that's kind of, I think, what it would be. So what's a school district strategic plan? Strategic plan is a team vision that provides direction to develop budgets, policies, and initiatives to meet our mission. This is strategic plan, not a comprehensive plan. It is a document that helps reveal and define the board's direction for Rutherford County schools, especially to relate to the budgeting process. We've done much of that. It's also important to remember some things that maybe it's not. It's not a document that replaces your policy manual. We have that, and that's in place. It's not a daily operating manual document for us today. It's not a document that includes everything that we may need but is comprised of critical focus areas. You just can't put everything in this strategic plan. It should not prohibit us from prioritizing addressing needs that are developing as we go along. And most of all, it shouldn't be a stagnant document, but should be revisited annually and modified to address our changing needs. Very often, you'll see a strategic plan as a five-year plan. Gosh, that's tough in Rutherford County. Because you see that every year when we go back in our building program, which we've got folded into this, that five-year plan. But we've placed some things that are probably five years out, or that are really kind of wishless things that sometimes, but I think it does. We think in terms of what would be a five-year plan, what would it look like in some of these other areas. But I do think it's something we should revisit. So you have in your folder, one of the things is kind of the table of contents there, the components. You can kind of look at that. That kind of tells you the outline. I'm not going to read to you tonight in this. We're going to look mainly at the spreadsheet pages. But that's kind of your overview of what we tried to include in it, and the areas that we tried to include this time. Okay, James, if you'll go on to the, I think, this sheet. You know, the thing that we want crystal clear in our mind is that whatever we do here as a school system, it really points that back to student success. We want high learning for every student. Your mission statement to empower today's students to grasp tomorrow's opportunities, that's our focus. Now, what we do in instruction and human resources and facilities and energy, what we do in each of these departments should point back to creating success for our students. Taking the dollars that the commission provides for us, that we receive, to create that student success. So that graph is kind of a very visionary way for us to not forget what everything needs to point back to. So that's one of the critical things that I want us to think about tonight. I'm not, there's an introductory section before you go to all of these particular sections as we look at it. And I'm not going to read to you tonight, because, I mean, you can read that or probably already read it. But we're going to take a look those if we can. This is where you need to really start putting some input and some things like that. And the first one is under the instruction. And there's a, we have several goals under each area. We tried to divide those up. So the first one that you have on the screen before you, and please stop me when you get to a point of you'd like to. The first one, Mr. Zago worked with, Mr. Trey Duke and some of our others, is looking at our instructional technology piece, software, things like that, that we separated kind of hardware technology from instructional technology, you know, in our plan now. So this is looking at some of the instructional technology. And so we use, the outline that we're using here is very similar to what the state has used, if we have to submit it sometime or something like that. But you got it the first, you got a brief description, you've got a plan for the implementation, you got evaluation strategy, which how you're going to see if it's working or not. You got your outcome you want, and then you got a budgeted amount that's an estimate as best you can. One of them is Compass Odyssey there, and that's basically for our sixth through 12th grade. We've got that in place. We use this for credit recovery. It is also, as a school systems, this is one of our first attempts to include, we're using some of this software for our online courses. But our teachers are teaching it. Carol McCauley did a presentation, if you remember that. How many did we finally have for summer school that went through summer?
We had approximately 400 applicants. We were there. So we had, basically, through our online program, it was enough to equal one teacher's instruction for seven periods a day for an entire year, which was very nice. We got all of that completed at about one-third of what it would have cost to hire and to pay for that one teacher.
We talk about us being able to do some online and do some things like that. I know commissioners kind of get excited about that some, because it's not a school building that you have to do. But there is some associated costs. And the Compass Odyssey, they continually upgrade it, and you have to pay an annual fee to receive those upgrades and those changes, support, software support. So what we're looking at there, if we want to commit ourselves to this, about 67,500. But our teachers also use this as jumping off tools in the classroom. You can take this, there's some, I watched one of them, which was on genetics, was biology, really excellent. The hottest, this Compass Odyssey people have picked people that are teachers or are strong in their field to do the presentation. And it's visual of a teacher teaching with the graphics and all of that with it. But so then they may take that sometimes introduction to class and then jump off on that and teach additionally. If a student misses a class, is absent, that sort of thing, out for a few days, they can reference them back to this software. So that then they can go back and pick up some of this for tutoring and that sort of thing on their own. So we think that's very important for us.
Mr. Oldham, did you say you wanted us to jump in, or?
Yes, sir. If you've got a suggestion, please do.
When we talk about instructional technology and we mention Trey Duke, I immediately think of the presentation that he made at the National School Board Convention and the software that was used at the elementary level. Remind me, what was the name of that software and?
Ames Web.
No, I'm not talking about Ames Web. No, it's the one that they used at Smyrna Elementary School and all.
Imagine Learning.
Magic Learning.
Imagine Learning, okay. Is, that's not part of these three right here?
We didn't, we didn't, at this time, have not suggested to put it everywhere, mostly for, more for a targeted instruction. And a lot of that's, it's used mostly in our Title I schools, right?
All of our Title I schools.
And when you say, especially, especially this person, that's something that we're implementing already, but this is a recurring cost and that's the reason we're there with that one.
Okay.
But we are implementing that. And it's kind of like we spoke about earlier, some of the things that we do have in place, we haven't added because we got it.
Okay.
Several things tonight, since we're trying to look forward, are not stuff necessarily that we're always doing unless there's, or already doing or have already purchased.
There was a characteristic, though, in the presentation of the Imagine Learning and the effectiveness of it. And one of the things that they learned in that program was giving the students the opportunity to, as soon, as early, as quickly as they can get to the building, have access to those computer programs. And open the computer labs in the pre-academic hours. And they even talked about they had to force the kids to go get their breakfast because they wanted to get to the computers, you know, with such intensity. And whatever we do with this type of online application, I thought that it was important to pull the success, the successful characteristic of that program, and give the opportunity for access to these computer programs where we don't have to have necessarily that instructional atmosphere and everything early in the day. And if that could be part of our strategic plan, I thought that we have evidence that it's successful and that it's effective. We're capturing, you know, the earliest, most attentive, you know, maybe the most productive part of the day for a student before they're distracted with so many other things. And so as we apply some of this information technology and an efficient and maximize the utilization of it, I thought early in the day might be a characteristic that we wanted to include.
Does Title I use some of their funds to bring someone in early to teach that? Are they doing that?
Yes, yes. They use some of their funding for what we call extended contract, but it's paid for.
So that'll cover 10 of your schools. If you tried to do it other places, because we don't have the software at every other schools, everywhere, you know. Because what does the, for school, what is the cost basically for Imagine Learning?
You purchase it by the seat. The seat, but the seat is not priority as far as, I don't purchase a seat for Mr. Terry Hodge, I purchase a seat for that school. And if Terry Hodge makes it to a certain spot, then I can move him out of that seat and move another student into it. But we have it at other schools besides the 10 Title I schools. Some of our at-risk middle schools also have access to that, or we're purchasing that with some of those funds, either through special ed or other instructional ways.
Would you like for us to add that, Imagine Learning, down here as a line for one of those? That's why we're here.
Yeah, I think there might be reason for that. But even when we're talking about the Compass and the MobiMax, you know, and some of these other instructional type of software, isn't the typical application kind of a midday or something like that? Because I know that whether it's ESPN at one school, or Extra Learning, or Blaze Time, or whatever it is, it's typically around lunchtime that we're able to flex the schedule and get people access to this. Am I saying that right?
Well, now, your Compass Learning, teachers can use it in the classroom, it can be used at night.
Okay.
I mean, we used it for summer. I mean, it is certainly not used necessarily at that time. MobiMax is one that takes, it's not one that really is a teaching one as much as it helps you identify needs for students. It's more of a diagnostic piece that the teacher's going to have to direct that, that again comes back as a formative piece to help instructionally with the student. It's a little bit different thing for that. Now, iSafe software is also another one of that type.
iSafe, it helps us track. And you see that CIPA, that's Children's Internet Protection Act.
Right.
It allows us to meet that requirement. We have a workaround for that at the moment. We're tracking that, but this one may get much easier for a very small amount of funds.
Yeah, I definitely saw iSafe as a kind of a separate thing, but the first two is instructional. But you say that MobiMax is really directed by the teacher for assessment.
It's directed by the interventionist and coaches and those folks that are academic coaches to help identify specific skills that students need. It helps us target an exact skill so we're not wasting time retreating that. We're teaching two-digit multiplication, we're teaching whatever it is.
We have a number of those things. Ames Web will be part of our universal screener for the response to intervention piece. We have another, for a lot of our kindergarten, first grade, second grade, we use what's something called DIBELS. Basically, again, but it points out phonemic awareness, phonics development in young children. Then we contract with something called a 95% group that basically has been really excellent. It takes this information for you and then comes back and said, use this with this child. I mean, it's really prescriptive by child and that sort of thing. But many of these things, we already kind of have in place. And so we didn't put that necessarily on the strategic plan if we're kind of already using it. I mean, that's the situation. That's kind of separates those two.
In this scenario. At-risk school and Title I school are not necessarily one in the same, right?
They're not.
No, sir.
They're not. Now, could you define interventionists for me?
An interventionist?
Yes.
There are people that work directly with students that are, have been identified that have a greater need for instruction, where we're giving them their tier-one instruction, which is the regular classroom instruction, but also identify them because they need additional support in, for example, phonemic awareness or number recognition or, we have, we have high school students, we have upper middle school students that can't read, that are coming from other systems or coming from other places. And we've identified them, and those people work directly with those children to help catch them up because they have that greater need. We have to do more in a shorter period of time to get them caught up so that they can be productive.
And that's what you put in through eighth grade this year with the interventionist and the coach.
And that's, that position is not necessarily team teaching.
Oh, no, sir. They're, they're working with specific targeted children with targeted skills. And that's why some of the software is necessary, is ordered to target the exact skill. For so many years, when a student did poorly in fourth grade, we taught them fourth-grade skills, but their issue was more of a first grade or a second grade skill. But we can't expect a regular classroom teacher to deal with the number of students that we have in those classrooms and then also deal with those other very targeted skills that take up so much time and catch that child up.
Let me kind of separate, you can separate standards from skills. The classroom teachers basically have a responsibility to teach the standard for that subject, that grade level. So with our RTI plan, we've divided some of that. And so everybody gets what's called tier-one instruction. I mean, in some of our elementary schools, we specify how many minutes per day you're going to teach reading and how many math and that sort of thing. So the teachers tend to be responsible for the standards piece. And as you begin to go into tier-two, that students aren't getting it with a standard presentation, then what we start looking at is skills. And the skills would be a specific sound in the lower elementary, or it could be something in math, it'd be they were having trouble with exponents or something like, specific skill. Now, that's when these interventionists that you're talking about, they then pull out all the kids that's having trouble with exponents together. And we have periods and times to pull them together, and they'll work just on that skill set. Now, every child getting intervention now has to receive, has received grade-level instruction. But you can't catch up if you don't do grade-level instruction, I mean, if you're always behind. So every kid gets grade-level instruction with this tier-one, as the teachers teach the standard, even if they're not quite there. But then we pull back and you've got tiers two and three, which increases the intervention time, but it is more skill-related, to specific skills. It's not, take two aspirin and call me tomorrow. It's, hey, we need to run a test on you to see exactly what your deficit is and see if we can address it. That's what this 95% group does. That's part of what MobiMax does for us and some of that, is we're trying to work smarter and get specifically to the need for that child. We had a conversation, the state set up a meeting, a telephone interview with us today, and it was myself and Mr. Duke. And it turned out, it's some company that the state is contracting with to try to find out RTI and that sort of, so they've visited our RTI program several times, we piloted it last year. And I mentioned to you that we had something like 39% more of our schools achieve their gap closure for economically disadvantaged where, that we were piloting this RTI plan versus the non-pilot. We piloted 10 schools in elementary and three middle, 13 schools last year. It's going now through all 25 of your elementary and your 10 middles. So it'll be through 35 next year. But we saw 30-something percent increase. It was a little bit different in math and the other in reading, which was the two things we did. In the school, they were meeting it much better. And why teachers are buying in it, you know, we used to just say, okay, this has got to be taught, they need help, you go tutor them, you, and poor teachers become overwhelmed in a little while doing that. But by adding this extra help and doing the breakout with your interventionist in that, the teachers are buying into it because, well, somebody's really helping me. And the coach there is helping them go through the data. And you do the screening with this Ames Web screener and all to see, is that intervention working or not? And, you know, then you back up and take a look, or do you need a different type for that child? It's much more specific. In my years and your years, I haven't seen anything where I thought we were really working that smart, rather than just simply re-teaching its targeted instruction and deficit skills. It's encouraging. It worked last year, I think, and I just can't see why it won't work again. But this company that called today that was contracting, said they, I don't know what, they talked to two school systems, you know, and we were one of them, so I don't know what it's about. But I told Trey, I said, I bet you're going to be on the road again if I had to guess, you know, in a presentation.
When you do the intervention work, do you limit the number of students that this interventionist will have?
And we'll, yes, and you may break it up into three groups if you have to do, you know, because they're covering multiple grades and things like that too, yes.
What's an ideal number? Four, five, six?
The maximum, the maximum set by the RTI mandate is 12. And I've always said that's a little bit large. Once you get over seven, and it's what, in elementary, we call it kidney table size. If I can't touch you, I typically can't maintain your focus with what I'm doing. But the max is 12, and we can work with 12 in the middle school in some of those settings. But, and that's the suggested max. They won't set it that because they don't want to fund the position. So that's the bottom line.
The advantage is, we used to take people that were having trouble with reading and say, you go to intervention, you're having trouble with reading. But if you're picking out the children that's having trouble with just phonemic awareness or a vowel sound or consonant sound, you can actually serve more students because everybody's working on the same skill and everybody has the same problem. And they hear each other try to pronounce the word, they look at each other doing it. So you capture something there that allows you then, where we used to throw out that big net and say, you got trouble with reading, go down there and get at with reading. The targeted is just so much stronger.
I, thinking ahead to, to one of the topics toward the end is, is community involvement. And, you know, we went through a phase a few years back where we were encouraging people to come into the school system and help as volunteers, people who are quite qualified to teach. You know, I would imagine, for instance, a journalist could help with phonics and reading and things like that. Are we able to utilize any, I know that the safety issue has become more of a problem than it used to be as far as bringing somebody into the school.
It is.
You have to go through quite a bit to do that. But to me, along this intervention process, time is a qualifier. You don't have just gobs of time to intervene with students. Am I right? I mean, you've got to continue that.
You're still trying to cover the subjects that they're going to be assessed on.
Grade-level studies, you've got to continue that. So I'm just thinking, as we look down the road toward this other topic that comes along later, that, I've just thought.
James, you make a note of that, why don't you, for yours sometime? I think we need to look at that.
Yeah, I think we need to look at an opportunity for people to be involved. I know there's a program John Pittard is involved in, that's a city school, but where people just go, and it's in the younger grades, where people just go for a half hour, an hour once a week, and have a particular student that they can just begin to do simple things with, early grades.
I'll tell you some things we do now, interestingly enough, for some of our schools. Some of our alternative school kids, like especially Smyrna West, go over and tutor and work with kids at David Urie and some things like that, that put in the time. And, you know, I can, I can relate to that, what they're doing. We were talking about today, about Sonny Gray, is, you know, pitching so well now. And one of the principals told me, he said, he used to be so good at working with kids that when he was with us, he would go over some and read to elementary kids and all, was really open to doing that. So there's probably more of that going on than we think, but I think it's one of the things that we could look at more to do. but I think it's one of the things that we could look at more to do.
You mentioned the benefit of everybody working on the same skill. And I see in the RTI framework at the state level, this peer assisted learning strategy. Is that an example of peer assisted learning strategy, or is the peer assisted learning strategy something beyond just hearing your neighbor work on the exact same skill that you're working on?
Peer assisted is really, I'll tell you where you'll see more of that done, and it'll probably when we go to RTI for the high school. We can actually give a student one credit in high school to being a teacher assistant. Now, I, I, because very often they need to get community time, or help time for, as part of their program in high school. The Mu Alpha Theta Math Club, very often will divide up and go work with Algebra One kids, and others like that. That's been going on for some time. Probably needs to be refined and written out a little bit better. We're just through with RTI, basically, through eighth grade right now. But peer very often is, again, where somebody that, that's can master the skill, can work with them in that, you know, in that particular skill. So probably needs to be expanded, but it's, some of it's already being done, I know.
Okay.
Mr. Odom, these intervention programs, you know, certainly, I, I think they're, they've been successful for us in the past, and they will be in the future. I see the professional learning community as being the umbrella
Yes.
that makes all of this come together, and not only in the interventionist part of it, but also in the, in the teacher role with the, the veteran teachers and, and the middle experience, and the new teachers, all coming together and creating that, that mission to succeed, the camaraderie, the fellowship, and everybody sharing their experiences, and what works best for this child, or what works best for that child. And I know this, this board and, and the central office has made PLC a, a priority over the years. And I pray that it continues to, to be that priority, because I really see that as, as putting all these ingredients together to have a recipe for success.
One of the things that they teach you in PLC is one of the, they have some matras or statements that they make sometime. And a student needing support should not be dependent upon the classroom that student is in. So when you have your RTI, and you have your interventions, you have your plan, you have your universal screener, you have your way in doing it, is to keep somebody from slipping through the cracks, or whatever it is. And it's more than one person responsible for that child. It, you know, it's ours.
Would you repeat what you initially said, a student?
A, a student, a student's level of intervention should not be dependent upon the classroom they sit in. It shouldn't be that, you know, if you happen to be in this teacher's classroom, you get lots of intervention, you get another, and you might not get as much. But when you have your RTI plan, you have your things in place, you have universal screeners in place, then you've got, the, the professional learning community then looks at that data for that child, and you, you make placements and assignments and things to how to do the intervention for that.
One of the things that Mr. Duke and I said to you guys when we were talking about RTI, one of the greatest tragedies in the history of, of public education is, is we've left it up to one person to determine another, the entire class's future. And that's what Mr. Odom's saying. It should not be determined by one person, the entire class's future.
But I also see PLC as an accountability factor, not only to the student, but between teacher and teacher and administrator to teacher also, that you have that opportunity, like, you know, again, you're accountable to the department head, to the administrator, to each other. You know, all the fifth grade teachers in that, on that campus, they're accountable to each other because they meet regularly, they share those ideas.
Doctors do the same thing. Even mechanics, when they're working on your car, will call the health fund.
It's amazing that it took so long for us to figure that out.
I agree. I agree. The second sheet, which is another goal, is the PLC RTI implementation with fidelity. And that's a little bit of what you, you've already kind of jumped into, the universal behavior screener. And this is part of the training and all that we think we need to do with the national norms and screener. That universal behaviors and screener is, again, to pick out what's deficit skills, that sort of thing, what, what may be missing. Theoretically, in, in, and it's not a, it's not a perfect world in percentages, but theoretically, tier one would serve eighty percent of your students, and about fifteen percent are in tier two, and about five percent of your students, the most severe ones, would receive tier three, which is additional time. Beyond, beyond tier three sits basically special education. I mean, it goes into that particular level. So there's actually another one, although it's not defined specifically with RTI like that. But the state is switching from, the, the old identification for a student with a learning disability was a technical definition, federal. Basically, they would give you an IQ test, then they would give you a test on, on reading, or, or some other deficit area. And if there was a statistical standard deviation between your IQ and what you were performing, i- if that performance was a standard deviation lower, then bingo, you qualified for special education. But, but the beauty of this is, you don't have to wait till you get with RTI, you're not waiting till somebody gets a standard deviation behind. For young kids, that can take two years. That doesn't work well. I mean, you want to say, how, how'd that work for you? Not, not real well, you know. So this, with the PLC and the RTI, lets you address it so much quicker. Even though it fits into special ed, RTI is a regular ed program. And interestingly enough, the consultants from the state today, when Mr. Duke and I were talking about, didn't seem to understand that fully. That was really interesting to me. You know.
I understand the RTI program, and I fully support the intervention on the academic side. It does give me pause, maybe it's just the way this is expressed, but behavioral screener.
You want to talk about that, Mr. Zago?
Yes, sir. One of the things that interferes with the student's instruction, or the academics' instruction, is sometimes their behaviors. And it ranges from the, the brightest of children, and, and we've seen many of our gifted children do some very unusual things that have caused themselves to not receive or to succeed at the potential that they have. So these universal screeners, and, and the semantics of it may be the greatest issue, or the thing that causes you a pause, to pause there. But these are screeners that give you a behavioral tendency that will interfere with academics. It has nothing to do with your behaviors outside of school, or things like, it would be more of an academic type behavior. It would, are you a student that would most likely complete your work? I mean, do you need more help in, in study skills? Do you need more help on those types of behaviors that cause you to learn? And Mr. Odom alluded to just a moment ago, that, that eighty percent of our students will be at that tier one level, but of that eighty percent, there's going to be a percentage of those students that will have behaviors that interfere with them from living up to potential, not just tier two or tier three students.
As I read through the description of the behavioral assessment, it not only looks at the academic behaviors, but also behaviors that may be impacting that student from home, or other environmental aspects. And as a board member, I just kind of grew this a little bit, thinking that every single student in Rutherford County is potentially going to be giving a, given a behavioral label. And, you know, I know that that's a bad way of saying it, but it's pretty easy the way it's described right here, universal behavioral assessment.
And our Ames Web is our universal screener for the academic portion of that, for those skills. It's just, once again, when you're norming, or you're putting in those statistics for that, you need something that, that assesses everyone to make that placement of if they need additional support and whatever. But academics are, and, and anyone that's been in education, I believe, you know, Mr. Jernigan could say, you know, we've met, we've met many children that keep themselves from living up to their potential just because of their behavior.
If, if, if this one is a hard problem for you, if you want to make a motion, I, this is our first strategic plan, it might be something shows up later. We, we got enough to do, it's not a problem. But I don't have a problem if one of the board members wants to take a motion to take one of them out, or put it in, we'll just do that, and then it'll not be in the next draft we do. So, I mean, I don't have a particular attachment to, to it. It's just, it's kind of a recommendation, but if you want to make a motion, I'm okay with taking that.
I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
I, I just like, before we start adding and subtracting, I'd like to hear the, the program, the, the strategic program, and then zero in on things that we, we can, that we question. And it's all right for clarification questions, but when we really get down to it, that's kind of like, that's, would be the way I would prefer to look at the plan.
We, we do not have money to do this right now. It's not in the budget. I mean, it's one of those things, again, it's a vision for the future. It's a, it's a looking out there. But if we're going to buy this, or have a contract, it's going to come back to you in that form, as we would look at different ones. So it's just however you would like to treat it. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying.
So what have you, what do you have, as we look through these, do you have most of these in place, or are most of these sort of on your wish list?
You have the compass in place, you have the, kind of the, some of those very first things we looked at, and we're saying that there's a significant cost to maintain that on an annual basis. And so that's, what's that there? But the iReady diagnostic, basically sixth through eighth grade, we've got that one.
We, we purchased that on a trial basis, and placed it in a couple of our, or actually three of our middle schools last year and piloted it. It was very effective, but we just did not have the funding in it for our budget this year. And it's something that was very effective and very useful for the middle school specifically. So that's why we placed it on this list.
Sometimes what works when our K five is not the same tool to do screening academic for the middle schools. So again, it's something, sometimes companies will allow us to use a, on an experimental basis, or something like that. You try, because they want them to sail, and it's very limited in how you can use it. And this is kind of one of those things, that you get a chance to try it out and see. But they put it on here because they felt that it gave them so much good information in a place that was piloted before.
Very effective tool, but our budget was just so tight this year, there was just no way to keep it in our budget.
It's not in place. That one's not in place. The ninety-five percent diagnostic instructional materials has been used for several years, in some places for Title I. And that's, that's a very expensive program to do that, but it gives tremendous amounts of information. I'm amazed.
Training is what's expensive, and of course, the training is what gives the value of the program for teachers to use it, which is key. But once you have the materials, you have the materials.
Just as we're taking notes, I, as I hear the description and such of universal behavior screener and such, if we were screening study habits, as opposed to behavior, you know, it just feels better. I'm not trying, like Mr. Jernigan said, we're not trying to take out and put in, or we're just discussing as we go here. Sunshine Law gets in the way of us hobnobbing on this, other than in this format. So, so it's just a matter of, of conversation. But I think as we're presenting this in a, in a document that may be looked at and held up and stuff like that, if indeed it's study habits perhaps, sounds a whole lot better than putting a behavior label on a, on a student.
Probably need to get them some other calls that go with that, what it checks for, and that sort of thing, I think would probably be. But, I mean, I'm okay if we want, could be in your next years if we need to. I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's not a big issue. That was the two, those two pages are primarily in the cost factors out there for instructional pieces. Not that we don't do a lot of other things like that. But these were the things that we kind of put in, those two goals that they put together.
Mr. Odom, before you leave instruction, if I could ask, and I'm really looking for input from other board members, and, and also from you, you have the cover page for priority area instruction, and goal number one, it's pretty cut and dry. It, it covers the measurable objectives and gap closures, and so it doesn't have one of these spreadsheet type things to go along with it. But it, it speaks for itself. My only thought and idea on that, and I'm ready to, you know, just shoot for the moon, as opposed to increase annual measurable objectives and gap closures, I was thinking meet or exceed all state standards for annual measurable objectives. You know, increase says we make progress each year, maybe we get there, maybe we don't. Meet and exceed says we're going to be state champions every year. Now, we probably won't be state champions every year, and that's okay, but every time we kick off, I don't know. My feeling is we ought to be shooting for that goal.
I'm okay to put that word in there, meet or exceed.
Okay.
I'm okay.
All right.
I think we'll do that. So we'll change that in our draft.
It's just a philosophical thing.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The last thing that I had was, nowhere in instruction do we make any mention of CTE, fine arts, ROTC, or physical education. In conversation with Mr. Zago, he said, yeah, we got those things. We're, we're rolling on that. And again, this is the dream document versus what, what we've got. My only concern is, if we make some mention to them, then they're not neglected, and those who are passionate about those areas get that little bit of mention somewhere in there, if we can find a way to, to make mention of that. Possibly in a five-year plan, maybe there is a possibility that we might get a system-wide fine arts director, which is a personal initiative of, of my own.
We could change that. We could change that in his first page there. Talked about, he talked about, where is it? Richard, you got the other, the science and person and all like that?
Yes, sir. That's the, where we had asked for the position.
Is that in the human resources section? Where is it now?
The first thing in instruction.
Okay.
Right after the priority area instructions, where we were just talking about, there's our full hold at least there. That spreadsheet must have got that wrong.
Is it missing? There should have been a spreadsheet in that one.
Yes, sir, there was a spreadsheet there.
Okay. We need to put that one in there. We need to put that one in there. And, and I think it's one of the things about something with fine arts or something, might be good to add that to it. You know, and I'm with you. I met with CTE today. We're very healthy in CTE, did a kind of a welcome. Hundred and fifty, nine through twelve CTE teachers now, really quite large, over industry suites. And they did a really good job. They had them together. They were clus, they were organized by their cluster, what they teach, the agriculture, the health science. About twenty new CTE teachers, they introduced all of them, you know, and they got a chance, had a, everybody had a notebook with the standards. And of course, their, their big thing now is they have to articulate so strongly back to the academic piece. But had a good opportunity to compliment them because their overall effect this year for CTE, for Rutherford County's of five, that was real good. So, you know, I complimented them on that. That'll roll out as time goes on, the poll cards come out. But they were doing some really, really good things. I, our CTE program's in pretty good shape. I mean, it's in excellent shape.
It may be long later in the document when we're talking about telling the story and, and, and those type of things. That may be where CTE falls in. But as long as we've got mention of it in there, those are, those that are passionate about CTE will get there too.
Well, this board for the last several years has been very passionate about the CTE. So, you know, I think it's been moved to the, to priority area, just like the other academic programs. So I'm, I'm very proud of, of, of our efforts with CTE too.
So our, our real edits basically here is going to be to change the language. I saw Ms. Michaels write that down, for that, to meet or exceed, you know, basically.
When you say meet or exceed, do you set yourself up for failure?
Some. You know, and I'll tell you what, you can, you can actually, Mr. Egs, go in, if you look at some strategic plans, you could literally go in and say, we want to go from this point, point A to point B. The state of flux that Tennessee is in now, about what test are you going to use?
Exactly.
The legislature's going to decide. The, the test for fifteen sixteen was bid out, and it comes back to the legislature deciding whether they're going to take it or not. So for us to put in this plan right now, I, I don't know how to do that. I, I don't have a clue about how to tie a percentage to that.
Can you give yourself a little leeway?
Well, I don't mind saying meet or exceed, because I, doggone, we need to be better than the Tennessee average, for sure. But I have trouble saying that you're going to be ten percent... But I have trouble saying that you're gonna be ten percent above where you were last year or something like that. I just don't know what the test is gonna look like.
It also gives us the hammer to be able to go after the state legislators and say, look, we're meeting or exceeding what your requirements are, but you keep moving the target. Get out of our business and let us educate the kids.
Good luck.
Can't say it if it's not in our plan.
And, and, um, um, I don't know exactly what to do with the universal screener piece yet. I, I'm a little uncomfortable because I can see what you're saying. Didn't see that initially. But I see what you're saying there, that it may be best to-
You know, they might change the, the title of that to some degree.
Um, it may be one of those things that needs to-
Point of emphasis with the supplier, whoever's manufacturing that product. I mean, that's-
It may be something that show up on a subsequent-
Yeah. But I know exactly what you're saying. That child that just won't sit and face the classroom teacher, he, he doesn't, you know, that's the behavior you're talking about. It's not that he's cruel and indifferent in any way. His, his, and you can call it study habits if you want to. It's the same thing. You know, you're not, you're not labeling that child as a problem. However, that child's parent may think you have labeled that child as a problem.
Call it, call it study habits and we don't get a call at the board level.
It's the third problem of RTI's work process. We just haven't established that here in our system. Because we just want to nail down what we're doing now and do it well before we move forward from there. But it is an essential part of that academic excellence and what we're doing to prepare our children for the future.
A, a child that gets a full screening for special education and a battery of tests, they'll come back and you find out, is this an auditory learner? Is this a visual learner? Is this a tactile learner? What's their strength? What's their need? So some of this is to do pieces of that. But I, you know, it's just, probably you're right, the wording or something, we need to deal with that some way.
I think we would change that with the language, just to be clear with the intent.
Yeah, uh, and maybe we need to go back a little closer to the RTI language or something with that. You ready to take a look at HR, human resources? These pieces are a little bit quicker. And instruction is our biggest piece. I know it takes a while. I mean, that's what we do. That's why we exist. The HR, we looked at some things in that. The first, uh, action plan goal under to recruit and retain highly qualified and effectively certified and classified people. That's Ms. Barnes and her people. And, and incidentally, we all met together. We've been meeting, we've been working on this thing, what, February, January, March? Had subsequent meetings, met together. What you see today is not what was on there earlier. And we've taken off, added, um, done several things in our drafts as we went through this. Uh, first one, to develop and maintain a differentiated pay plan that supports compensation for effective teachers and attracts and retains new teachers. And, and that's pretty an encompassing statement. And the legislature's gotten involved in that. Uh, and so, you know, we did back away from the ones and twos. Um, you know, it's really, really interesting. I, I, and I mentioned that the other night, sitting there, that some of the effect scores that we're seeing this year just varies too much by the subject and the grade. It shouldn't. I mean, it should be that bell curve, basically, that's that one to five effect. And I mean, the sixth grade language arts, I even sent a special thing to the principals to make sure that you, um, talk with these people. I, I've had people, this excellent teacher's been calling, sending me emails, do I need to do something else? And they don't. They don't. I mean, they got, they've got twenty-two level five teachers across the state in, in, in English Language Arts for sixth grade test. There, there is more people in, in level one than they have in the top three levels, for example. It don't make sense. Something, there's some anomaly there. And so it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take some time. So I, I'm not ready to use a hammer. We use it to develop improvement plans for teachers, working with principals. It's kinda one of those flags that goes up. Is there an issue related? And let's work on that. But, uh, we, we have, we have another place in you. We are meeting the requirements, the law, law requirement for differentiated pay plan. But, uh, at some point, when this thing gets worked out, or if it does, in, in looking forward in this, um, it, it's something that, that makes sense. And the public is quite a bit for pay teachers who are the highest performing, more and stuff like that. All that's there. But again, remember, you're looking at in the future. That's not something's gonna happen today. Or maybe even next year or the year after. I don't know. Um, the other one, second one there, effectively utilize the current applicant software program to screen and track candidates. Um, and so we need to do some more training for our principals. We have a really, people apply to us online with their subject area. They can upload transcripts, many other things too. Um, it, it's, uh, if, if you practice it a lot, it's relatively easy to use with Lawrence, right?
Yes, sir.
But what we're saying here is we're not utilizing it to the level that it could be utilized at. And we need to spend some more time for training and preparing to, um, handle the applicants. For an elementary position, we can get two or three hundred applicants. Now, if you're math today, you can get a job pretty easy or in certain specific areas. But we, we need to utilize this as we grow, uh, that piece of software. So that's-
I had some dream ideas on utilizing that software. I don't know if the software will give us the ability. First, house cleaning. There's no impediment to us hiring someone that is a contract employee that is coming in as a substitute teacher. We don't have to like pay that, that outside company that's supplying us substitutes. It's not like a placement agency where we have to buy that teacher out or anything like that. Okay, alright.
Unless it's Teach for America.
Okay, alright.
That's another.
Alright. With that out of the way, what if there was an incentive for our substitute teachers to be an, an applicant for full-time employee? If you're a substitute teacher, you have to fill out, or there's an incentive for you to fill out an application to be a full-time teacher. You may not have the skills, you may not have the qualifications. They're different things. But if that was there, then would our software allow us to have principals comment or track inside our system on how that substitute performs? I know from experience with the principals, if I've had exposure to that person as a substitute teacher or something like that, I get comfortable with them, I get familiar with them, and I might hire them in. The concept is that if they were subbing at Blackman or then subbing at Laverne and then subbing at Stewart's Creek, well, Segal has a position open. They trust the comments that are made by those other principals if that person is somehow in our system. And if that person is identified, I'm a substitute teacher, I'm making ends meet until I can get a full-time position with Rutherford County. Have I said enough? Y'all know where I'm going?
No, are you doing that, but they're doing it properly?
Okay.
Uh, Jeff Reed were here, he'd probably tell you, you, you might wanna do that verbally. Uh, almost everybody that's a substitute teacher with us,
Okay.
um, i- if they have a degree, they've already applied. And, and, and we hire so many people from the substitute teachers and from the educational assistant list. I think this year, I, there's no telling how many educational assistants that became teachers for us this year. Got out in a building, they could see how they perform. Huge numbers. But, but I tell people, because we have two or three hundred applicants, and you're not gonna have that many openings at elementary, i- if you can afford it, go to advantage, sign up to be a substitute teacher. You're gonna be in multiple schools. You'll be seen by multiple administrators. They're gonna see your skill. And, and next time when they have an opening and you apply, I mean, they've got a face and they've got somebody that's done a good job. You just kinda move up to the top of the list.
Okay. Next dream. And I don't know if it's appropriate. I'm just throwing things out for discussion because this is my opportunity to do so. Um, is there any reason for us to use a individual's substitute track record as an incentive for them to come to work at Rutherford County because we credit them some percentage? One-third of the hours that you spend as a substitute teacher toward your five-year, uh, wicket to try and get to tenure or something of that nature? I don't know if law would allow us to do it or, but is there anything that we can do there as we're trying to recruit effectively and we can't use finances?
State law still prohibits the use of substitute time towards teacher, certified teaching experience.
Okay.
It has to be in, as a certified teacher, that is the experience.
And you have to have five years within, how long this-
Five years within a seven-year cycle.
So I mean, some of that is controlled also.
And consecutive scores those last two years.
Just try.
That's right. I appreciate that. But that is what we're trying to get them to do is, is watch the, as they screen applicants. We want principals to go in and, and add some kind of scoring mechanism so that the next principal looking for a candidate doesn't have to go through all three hundred. They can see at a glance who has rank very high in that interview process.
Yeah.
I think over the years of board members, you know, we've been asked by people, you know, will you give me a recommendation? And, and that's all well and good. You know, administrators, their jobs depend on the performance of their, of their teachers. And, and they're gonna be very critical of, of their hires. And I think all of us at one point in time have said, hey, get your foot in the door and an educational assistant or, or a sub if you can.
It's an old, old method that is-
That made you hire from your substitute.
Tried and true. It's worked what?
Tried and true.
It is. Um, kinda look at the next one of hers, which is a second goal, personnel records management system. And of course, we keep records back there. They're paper files and that sort of thing. Implement a paperless process for employment procedures and personnel files. And this is one thing that I kinda hinted with you, um, with some of that. Um, one, one of our issues that we have in Rutherford County in general, we're part of it, that we continually rekeying that information, you know? And, and you have systems, large systems that have now software. You go in and make an application. If you're employed, that your information you typed in as a, your candidate or applicant will flow over into the payroll thing to be checked, which flows to where you make your payments and that sort of thing. And Rutherford County as a whole doesn't have that. Um, that's not in place. But I think again, us beginning to put something this on a strategic plan, it's time for Rutherford County, whether you're sheriff's department, a road employee, or a teacher in our system or other some employee, to begin to look at something that's, that, um, helps this information flow. You're hiring people to key data in that could be keyed once. And business and industry wouldn't do what we do in that respect. We just, we just haven't moved forward on that. And that's one of the things, what, uh, that's what Ms. Barnes is talking about there. And in the second one, electronic records management system for current personnel files, um, that everything we have now, we still pull by paper and all. And that's, that's not done typically either in business and industry. But it would take changes beyond us. It's gonna take, um, a buy-in from county as well.
I like the school system leading.
And they, they'll give you the opportunity to buy it too. That'll be how they'll let you lead it. And we've even done pricing and stuff. You go somewhere like, I mean, you visited Atlanta. That system was, how much did they spend on theirs for the school? Yeah, that was a school system in Atlanta, huge. So you can go, I mean, you've got Cadillac or, or smaller or whatever, you know? I mean, it's, it's all over the place. Needs to be functional is the main thing.
I don't have a single suggestion for my next idea, um, but I wanted to mention it before we leave HR. Retirees and effective use of retirees. There have been a couple of times over the past three years that we have used retirees, uh, very, very well. When we had to evaluate a whole lot of teachers and administrators and all kinds of stuff, we pulled some of our retirees in. Uh, we've got, uh, Mr. Tim Tackett in part-time position, and there are others who are in part-time positions in that retirement. I think, I, I, I don't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily need to be a named priority in a strategic plan or something. But as we continue to have more and more retirees, and they are so valuable to us and have so much experience and so much to offer us, effective use of our retirees, uh, I think is an appropriate strategic initiative. I don't know what it is because there are so many things involving, you know, the number of hours that they can spend, the amount of income that they can earn, how it impacts this, that, and the other. But if it's possible to maybe get a win-win where the system has benefited and the retiree has benefited, um, we, we will have absolutely struck gold.
They did quite a bit of interim for a hundred days. Why don't you explain that to them?
We actually have several retirees who come in and do interim teaching positions for us because we have a large number of teachers who take longer medical weeks, maternity in particular. And retirees will come in and they know they can work up to one hundred and twenty days during the course of a fiscal year. So they crack that time. We help track it with them and they can claim their retirement as well as be paid as an interim teacher. So it's a win-win for them too.
If it goes beyond that, they start losing retirement. So it's not in their benefit to do that.
We do have several.
Yeah, it is.
And you, and you have some positions that you're kinda co-sharing the position with, uh, as far as retirees go. And that's maybe outside of specific classroom work, but at, at least I'm thinking of, of, uh, one situation in particular where they share some responsibilities and, and they still are limited to the hundred and twenty days. But it gets it done by having more than one option there.
I noticed you didn't use the term volunteer, Mr. Holliday, when you-
Vol- volunteer? No, they're not volunteers.
That, that would be cost-effective.
Yeah.
There's a good number of them do. I mean, really, if they want to work, I mean, they'll tip.
You've been sharing your dreams. My dream is, is that we get more qualified volunteers. We've talked this professional thing. It's, it's big nationally. You know, you have some people stepping down from CEO positions and doing work. We've seen people step down from a CEO position and go into the classroom. Um, so that's my dream. That the community will take enough interest. And it's easy to complain about education, but we don't have a lot of people out there saying, I, I got an hour, I got two hours. What could I do? But that's where I'd like to see us. And we're gonna get there in a few minutes, in that direction. So I'll be quiet.
Uh, operating in capital needs was Mr. Sandvik basically headed that up. Um, by law, we had the differentiated pay plan. Um, basically, he kinda gave you a cost out there. Some of this is going on now. But that's your academic coaches, um, that's your interventionists and things that we're doing, which, as we told you earlier, we were, we've been able to, um, take some, in Title I, we've been taking some positions and rolling it over, re-identifying. It had, has always been a new position in that. Um, when we get to grades nine through twelve, a reason it needs to be on here. Um, to get to grades nine through twelve, there'll be another cost there. There's not gonna be as many people that you can roll over to do that. We have up to two, two additional years to add nine through twelve unless the state changes the plan. But they won't mandate it for another two years. But it needs to be on there as part of our strategic plan. How we can do that and some of the costs associated with it. The second, uh, goal, their retirement plan changes. Um, Jill Sandvik was called to emergency meeting at the courthouse today to discuss the Concord Plan. Is anything in this, I wanna ask him this, anything in this that would conflict with what you heard today? It's mostly technical things today, record keeping, presentation, that sort of stuff.
Additional field we have to use to properly feed that into the retirement system.
I think we just had to keep this in front of us because the state left from the old Tennessee Consolidated to the hybrid plan. So it's been, and that's a requirement of the state. So that needed to be in front of us, although we don't have a specific cost to us from that. Um, number two, presenting you TCRS hybrid retirement plan to new teachers. We're rolling that out. It's not a huge cost there, but as people come on and have experienced this, this is not a case where existing teachers can help them much with. I mean, this is financial. So this is, this is a training issue. It's on here, but it's a training issue. The third one, refine the TCRS hybrid retirement plan for new teachers. So all of this basically here, this retirement plan changes. Most of this is educational. It's not cost. But it's things that we need to keep in front of us that we've, if you want happy employees, we need to cover this. We, we just need to see that we're doing the right thing by them. Here's, uh, the other goal three. Um, this is general purpose school fund. Analyze the school system's general purpose school budget revenues and expenditures like with a contin- continuing student growth. Um, and again, I think one of the things that we, uh, talked about in this, you know, last year we grew close to two point nine percent and our budget went up two point three percent. Um, we, we even at one time thought about, let's put a percent in here that has to match the other. But there may be some years you need to catch up. There may be some, some, you know, we, we didn't even keep up this year. Uh, it's just a matter that's gotta be in front of us, but we didn't feel comfortable- Uh, it's just a matter, this gotta be in front of us, but we didn't feel comfortable sticking thing in and say this needs to be exactly this amount, one way or the other, if you can understand what we're saying, dealing with that. The, the goal four there, analyze the school system's building program needs for the next five years. And this is, if you look at the next page, this is the one that we did last November, I think. Um, and we'll visit this in a special meeting, you know, and so that becomes a part of our plan. As we look at again, and we're, um, actually have meetings tomorrow, plan to look at, again, some other potential properties, that sort of thing. We're getting some preliminary numbers from principals, uh, it's a little bit scary. Looks like especially in the middle school area, you know, Blackman's, um, saying numbers over thirteen hundred, you know, it's not quite open yet. And, and Rock Springs Middle, Smyrna, um, you know, we're seeing some pretty good growth there, so, um, you know, it may, may be a, a year for middle schools. We have a little reserve capacity in high school, we have very little reserve capacity in elementary, and not much anymore in middle. So, uh, with the exception of Whitworth, Buchanan, you know, and that, most of the others are kinda up there, so. This page will be revisited and changed by you as this whole separate item, November, right Joyce, when we do that? It's when we do the projects, so. We thought if we're gonna post this and other people see it, we need to post with it our five-year building plan, that's why it's there.
Mr. Odom, would this be a, 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 a place for us to revisit and, uh, analyze the cafeteria fund again? It's something that we had put together in the past several years ago, and, and we've seen it, you know, I think this year fall with a, with a, with a deficit is, is this, would this be something to, to take a look at that now at this time?
Um, I, I'm trying to think of how that we stated as a goal, um.
Other than analyzing, uh, you know, management of, of each cafeteria program? I don't know, I'm just like.
You wanna kinda look at that Jeff and see if there's something?
I, I think just kind of some comparative analysis of our costs would accomplish that, Mr. Blair.
Yeah, because, you know, what I hope hasn't happened is that going to the cafeteria fund hasn't taken the incentive of, of, you know, from each management, each manager at each school site, if, if you know what I mean.
Right.
That, uh, okay, well, I'm, you know, I'm part of a team effort, so I don't have to do as well as I did in the past, because maybe somebody else pulls me out of the hole. But everybody ought to have that same mentality of success and, 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 and good, uh, and good meals and, uh, good management techniques.
Well, one of the difficulties is, I'm gonna put my old principal cap back on some and all too. One of the things that you run into, um, the reimbursement rate varies, whether it's for every student gets a, you know, they're not free reduced, they get a reimbursement rate there. There's a reimbursement rate for the reduced, and there's a reimbursement rate for the free students. And schools that, um, that have higher percentage of those reimbursed, federal reimbursements, tend to have more cash than the, the ones where it's, it's all paid. Um, so i- it's difficult, it, it's actually more difficult probably for cafeteria managers and all that do not have large numbers of free reviews to balance their budget than the others. But we started sending out basic menus, so that if you're at one, it's kinda like the educational thing. So if you're at one place, your food's not gonna be a lot different than you are somewhere else, and it can be a little bit more independent in the sharing of that. But I, I, I see what you're saying, um, to try to do that, I'm just trying to think of how we can put it in a goal.
Yeah, and I, I wonder, are, with what the example you were giving with the, the higher free and reduce, they have larger accounts, are those at our older schools that need more, more cafeteria attention too, so?
And that's where we brought Peter to pay Paul some there. You know, your, your new schools that are built have, um, their equipment's new, uh, you have certainly the first year warranties covering, things like that. So they can go five, six, seven years. Um, and when you voted as a board to combine them several years ago, in some of those schools like that, some of those funds could be used for the ones whose equipment's older and need to be replaced, and that was one of the ideas behind that.
But, you know, again, if we're taking the incentive way to succeed, you know, that.
I, I'm just thinking of how we can write the goal for it. You know, um, I don't know. But we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we're having, we're probably having as much conversation tonight as anything, so.
Uh, uh, but I, I, see, I, that was my downside when I heard we were first gonna do it. I mean, it, I mean, I, I had a cafeteria manager that would literally make her own buns. Really, they were better than the bought ones. But, but in the, in, in order to do that, she also had additional labor hours, and all, all of that begins to play into it too.
Sure.
It's a complex formula.
And, and this, uh, and I don't want it to be a knock, you know, that I'm criticizing, you know, our, our cafeteria managers. Uh, but, you know, it just, you know, as we're analyzing and, and looking at these programs, you know, that's probably something we need to revisit, because we, we passed it several years ago, and I don't know that it's had any real scrutiny since that time.
Right. For our people listening on television tonight, any of the monies that come into the cafeteria funds must be spent in cafeteria funds. You can't move it, even if you, even if you create a surplus one place, it's gotta go back into the cafeteria. That's a federal requirement for the reimbursement.
I have just a question on that, Mr. Odom, this, Mr. Sandvig, I guess, uh, since Mr. Blair brought it up. On cafeteria fund, what we saw this year, uh, things somewhat go south, I guess. Uh, I'm talking about deficit. What do you anticipate for next year? Do you think students, more students are bringing their lunches? Is what some of the problem is?
I think there are schools where that is part of the problem. Some of the changes in what the foods we must offer have probably caused more children to bring lunches, yes.
I guess my, I guess where I'm going with this is, is we went backwards somewhat this year. Uh, and, and we're running into this trend right now, what are we gonna do down the road?
You know, it actually picked up a lot, it was kinda interesting, and we probably could bring that back to y'all as a report. We actually had a higher percentage eating this year than we did last year.
Yeah.
Um, but the feds came back and changed the serving size. Um, so more kids came back to eat with the serving size, because we had these old middle school boys that were going to practice football or basketball after school, and they, they, you know, it wasn't enough. So they did relax some of that. Another thing that's affecting your cost is that they require additional, um, fresh fruits, vegetables, and that sort of thing. And that does up your cost, it's better for us, a- and it's good for kids. But there's, many of the factors that impact it are, are federal factors that are playing into, into this, uh, cost change, so.
One of the other factors that impacted it was our, uh, move to recyclable, uh, paper goods and, and some of those kind of investments that we made. And I understand the board pressure, because I'm, we're witnessing it tonight, and I certainly have it as well. Uh, I wanna keep the pressure on that, that, that the cafeteria stay at a net zero, uh, kind of thing, not be a deficit endeavor. Have we felt any of that pressure and made any different decisions as we go into this year? Or are we, we're staying with all those same products?
Staying with those products.
When we get to telling our story then, we certainly wanna make sure that we're telling the story of the, uh, environmental responsibility that, uh, that we're showing, uh, as a school system, so.
But, but typically, again, we don't use those unless the dishwasher's down or something, or special. I mean, it's not, it's not the day-to-day thing that you're.
Sure.
You're doing that, so.
Right.
Mr. Hodge, I, I interrupted you.
No, no, you're good.
We'll get to what you need today.
What I saw this year, I just don't wanna say next year, I guess, where, where my, the whole gist where I find out.
I think we have to look at each year and say, what, what is the cost of a meal gonna be sustainable? How long has it been since we've actually increased the cost of a meal?
I think four years.
Something like four years, so, it's kinda like at home when you go to the grocery store, you know, what was it cost four years ago versus now?
And we may well have to increase next school year.
What, what, in other words, and what is the federal government gonna, you know, they furnish us also with commodities. So what level of commodity, and that really varies, and, and part of that's a subsidy program that goes with agriculture and that sort of thing. If the federal government has to buy up a lot to maintain the stable price of a product, then very often, when they buy it up, it'd be some of its, you know, military schools and things like that, so. It varies from year to year, you just don't know a lot of that. Let's look at facilities and energy efficiency, if that's okay, and that's Mr. Clardy's area, taking a look at, probably the most expensive part of the budget. Um, but something we gotta get out there and say. The first one is the roofing HVAC replacement and repair. And he's, he's rolled this out for us several times, uh, and you see, of course, on the roof replacement, number one there, that first goal. We've got, you know, thirty-seven roofs that we're looking there, we've got forty-six total sites with multiple roofs in, in, in schools and all, and then dealing with that. His estimate, if we're really gonna keep up with this like we should, could be up to three point four million per year. And that's more than we get out of our share of that, setting aside those pennies for us. So, uh, what he's saying is we're getting behind. You wanna say anything to that again? I think they, I know they've heard it before, but. I mean, this, this is old news, but on the plan. And then the second one there.
We dealt with that topic, uh, I was thinking.
We did.
We've got a budget of twenty, two million, three, something like that. And if we apply that to our home, if our home were worth a hundred thousand dollars, we would be spending two hundred and thirty dollars a year to maintain our home, to keep it functioning. Air conditioning, so forth and so on. And so that kinda gives us a, a, an idea of where we are. We're out of balance, we're way out of balance. Nobody wants to, to get us in balance when it comes to the dollars, but we're way out of balance. It's only gonna grow, because we've got more schools, more air conditioners, and, you know, so that's, that's gonna tilt. Uh, it's, it's coming, so we just need to be prepared for it.
That's what a strategic plan does, though, it puts out front, hey, we see this as an issue.
A big issue.
But we see it as an issue, you know, as for others to see. And the second one's very similar, HVAC compressor boiler, of course, we had to go out and replace the one at, uh, Blackman. You know, and both of them are running now, running well, but we're, uh, the age of them, and the years that they're, they came on and they're going off, we see that as a potential, uh, likely issue for us in the coming years. The other, the second sheet was something we're fairly new at, you know, because we hired our energy, energy manager, Mr. Stacy's kinda heading that up. The energy, energy management education, uh, looking at that. So, uh, one of the things that we're looking at is this assessment. We, we're thinking about bringing, if you look at, it's interesting, if you kinda look at what we're doing, at different teacher administrator functions, bringing specialists in the field of energy management to teach and educate the purpose of stakeholder buy-in. I mean, part of your deal with any time you're conserving energy is, is stakeholder buy-in, you know. We've done some of the things that we could do ourselves, to devices to turn the lights off, to reduce the water flow and that sort of thing. But there's still many other issues about, you know, the window probably needs to be shut, you know, and, and several other things that you can do that's related to that. So that's something that, that's not gonna be a huge amount, but something we need to look at. And, and interestingly enough, as we do this with kids, then hopefully they, this is part of their education. If they begin to take some of those same things home and do them at home, uh, as a county, as a nation. We have twenty-four schools, uh, the remaining twenty-four schools on digital control systems, we currently have twenty-two of forty-six. Um, and that is where we basically monitor it, can set it back and off, up here at the central office. Um, we started this initiative, goodness, twenty years ago, at least probably now, um, you know, with old Honeywell system. Uh, Donald remembers that probably.
Yeah.
And all too.
Remember it well.
When you wanted to Pete the old meeting and it wasn't on, is that what you remember most?
Yeah.
But that technology certainly is advancing, but being able to schedule it and cycle off, cycle on, is the same thing as your thermostat on your wall at home, if you have one of those that will, unoccupied time, cycle out, cycle on, and that sort of thing. Uh, these things have paybacks, and, and you, there's plenty of research that tells you how quickly it can pay back. So, um, I, I think it would be beneficial to us, and that's, that's a step where we're, we're not there. And you used to deal with that, Mr. Young, right?
I did. Do we have a priority list of which, which schools we see the most opportunity at?
We do, and Mr. Stacy has that, but we, uh, we're con- concurrently taking some pulse meters and different things and putting them in some of those schools that were, uh, and out of the regular maintenance budget. Then also like, for instance, Eagleville School that we're putting addition on, we've tried to build a contingency in there to go back and upgrade their entire system while we're in there working on the building. So we'll spend probably forty thousand dollars out there getting that system up, so everything will be reading. So we're, we're trying to find opportunities to get that done. And, uh, one of the things, uh, everything that's involved in capital needs is very noble. Uh, I mean, it's very personal and hands-on, let the temperature in a classroom go up to two degrees and you start getting cold. Or let it drop to degrees in the wintertime and you start getting cold. So, uh, it, it's very difficult to educate the children if you can't keep them in the right environment to get that done.
We actually need number three to make number two work better, if you wanna know the truth. You need to do the reading, the, the two kinda turns it off and on, but you, you need, you, you need data.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it'd be nice to see a list of where we see those dollars, and most dollars saved at which locations.
I'll bring that into your one, the record media reporting before long, I'll bring that into.
Mr. Odom, before we leave facilities, uh, you talk about getting buy-in from other aspects of the county and, uh, and, you know, a co-operative effort. Commissioner Schaefer has expressed a number of times his concern about, uh, the landfill, uh, in Rutherford County, and, uh, that we may find ourselves at a place where it's full. And, uh, and it, he has a, a passion for recycling, and he and I have had conversations, just casually, uh, about county-wide recycling efforts and the lack of an opportunity for that, because even the convenience centers that are in place, uh, have certain hours, and maybe it's not, uh, really, uh, conducive for the, uh, you know, for whatever your personal schedule is to get your recycl- recyclables, uh, over to that facility. And, uh, recycling, uh, materials are often, not always, not in a perfect world, but often fairly clean, uh, not, 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 they don't carry a whole lot of odor with them. And it's also something that may kind of fit together with the generational impact that we have in education, where if we impact a generation that's in school right now to be good stewards and recycle the, the things that they use, then in very short order, we find that it's just pervasive throughout our community. I don't think by any means that I'm proposing that we include it in this strategic initiative, but I thought I would mention it at this time, the possibility that our schools be a strategic partner with our county commission and with the sheriff's department to have recycling centers at some of our schools. Now, principals may say immediately, nope, that's a bad idea, and, and I'm receptive to that. I'm not trying to force something on them, but we have adequate lighting, we have security cameras. I'm not trying to force something on them, but we have adequate lighting, we have security cameras, and we have SRO officers, you know, who could take a look at that video surveillance if we see somebody dumping something that's, you know, inappropriate. And, you know, we could have a, a certain hammer effect on, you know, don't, don't bring your trash here. This is for your recyclables. We have the community regularly visiting those facilities, bringing their children to school and such, dropping off their recyclables. It could have a positive impact and kinda serve to help the, the community in a, in a synergistic way.
You know, and you're correct about how many years the landfill's supposed to last, you know. I learned some things this spring, Rutherford County, and our schools participating in this have single-stream recycling. One of the things that surprised me, we used to, part of that was paid for by what was recovered, but they're having to pay to do single-stream recycling now. And I don't know who our contract's with, and I don't head that up, but I thought that, that's kinda strange. The other thing, we've, we've, we look at it, so paper is one of the easiest things, schools do a lot of that. In fact, we've put waste baskets in schools, so this is kinda like when you go to a hotel now, this is for the trash and this is recyclable. We've got those in our school building, our kids go and do that. We've actually spent funds, maintenance funds, one of our issues is that we've had to put locks on it, deal with, people come in there in the weekend and they pour something in, there's liquid in it or something, and then the whole bin is, is, you lose it. I mean, it can't be so, when they pick it up, they can't take it to recycling, they have to take it down to the waste. So, he's put locks and all on them. We even said this to the principals when we met with them last week. We're still willing to try to do that for them. Another thing that, when you look at some of our waste, for example, this single-stream recycling won't take our milk cartons unless we wash them out. If you pay somebody to wash them out and you take the water to wash them out of all the milk cartons you have and dealing with it, it's not cost-effective. So, there, there's just some, I don't know, in some ways here, Rutherford County, our technology is not, of being able to recycle is not where it is in some other places, and, and I don't have the answer for that. But I, I can tell you we're trying, I mean, we really are trying to do that.
Glad to call in Schaefer and get him maybe do a little volunteer work. And get him involved in trying to help us educate some of the freshmen and some of the school personnel and different things. So, glad you brought his name up, I'll give him a call.
Absolutely.
He's retired, though. He's retired.
Mr. Roden, you may not know this either, but the county generals having trouble with this, the county recycling center, the one that's on Long Henry Road, has always been open twenty-four seven. That's why I take mine, you can drop it off. They're having to implement monitoring now where someone has to be there for it to be open because they're having trouble with, some of the trouble with contamination, illegal dumping, things like that. So, I, and even Kroger used to offer that with the county, and they had to shut it down because it was always in such a disarray, where people just go and dump stuff that's not recyclable. So, I think it would, for our principals, it would probably be a big eyesore for them and a big headache because people, they just don't wanna drive the extra mile to the convenience center when they're open. They'll just dump it wherever they see a dumpster. I think Gary, you mentioned that we have an animal carcass in one of ours.
Dead deer, dead dog.
Really surprising how people abuse the system.
I, I totally understand, and I don't think it would be, you know, a haphazard effort. I mean, we would have to really get after it, but, you know, we also have the video cameras, you know, and, and everything. I think people have a sense that that school is being watched, you know, and I, I know we have problems right now, but if we were to do this countywide and the sheriff, you know, stood up and said, I'm gonna be watching what you're dumping, and the county commission said, we're gonna be funding the sheriff watching what you're dumping, and the principal said, your kid is gonna have to go out there and clean it up if you mess it up because, you know, or something, I don't know. But if we all got together on this, we could have a bigger impact, whereas right now, there've been an attempt here, an attempt there, an attempt there, we, we're just exploring.
Before, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Roden.
No, I'm going somewhere.
What I don't want to get lost tonight because Mr. Clardy has made several presentations. You've talked about it in open meetings and we've discussed it, but this roof replacement, as far as a deficit, as far with, with what we're receiving through the capital projects fund and with our schools getting older, and not just from the roof replacement, but for the HVAC, but painting inside the schools, just, just regular maintenance. And, and we've built, we've built several schools over the last ten years, but we, but those schools that we built ten years ago are now ten years old, and they take wear and tear. And, and I think as a board and, and utilizing our stakeholders, we have to make sure that, that our funding body understands that our schools are old and we've had the, the advantage of using this capital projects fund in the past, but, but it's, it's deficient now. It, it's not keeping up with the wear and tear and the weather and, and, and it, and the aging of these, of these structures. And it, this part, this component is so very important because we're talking about two degrees one way or the other, you know, conducive environment for learning. You know, if water's dripping on their heads or if it's too cold or too hot, you know, all of those things are distractions. And they, we have to be aware of them now because that tsunami of repairs probably coming sooner rather than later. Would I be correct, Mr. Clardy?
That's right. It's, you know, once the, the rate of decay increases, if you don't take care of something up front, the faster it falls apart. If you can catch a problem, you slow it down and keep it under control. But if you don't have the money to spend, then it just falls apart, try to pour it out, and it falls apart faster and faster and faster. So, it is very important to have funding for that, and, you know, we, right now, the two point three million we get every year, we try to manage that as best we can to get the most out of that money, and we manage to do that. We're pretty much ending all of it at this point, and, you know, we find we don't put a lot of extra money in there for contingencies and things. We just go and do the specific project for the cost that we said it was going to be done for. And so, there's usually not left, much left in there. If it is, then it goes back in the fund and we amend it out to do something else that is needed. And some of those might be replacing the children or something, some of those types of things that we have an infected call for.
Okay. In developing drafts and giving you your draft last time, we left a whole page out, so, you know, I'll just take the blame for it, and it's on in front of you. So, what we would like to do is we left out the section, it was still part of Mr. Clardy's, is, is technology hardware and systems. We had the software support over there, and we turned around and left this out. And this is computer and phone switch replacements. This is a, a process where we start replacing the student, teacher, the projectors, the servers. It's some of our best guess projections of what it's gonna cost us to try to keep this up over a period of time. So, we'd like to add this page, if that's okay for y'all to do that, we show up on the next, have add this to that. Just hardware technology is what we're talking about.
I ride through other communities from time to time and see that they are a Verizon school system or they are a Sprint school system or something of that nature, and I have to imagine that it has some tie-in to the manner that their internet service is provided or, you know, support for the schools from a corporate entity or something of that nature. As we look at upgrading communications and technology, have we explored those possibilities and is there benefit?
Yeah, it, it is, but a lot of it has to do with the way the federal monies come down. Jeff, and you may have to explain this, we get funding for a part of this. We, we're actually in AT&T. There's, there's more than one competitive group out there that's doing that. I'm not aware that Verizon has done as much in Tennessee yet to come into the school business and things like that. But one of the nice things with AT&T that happened when they ran fiber optics all over Rutherford County, out to the rural areas and all, one of the things that they did, they ran fiber optics to our school areas. And so, when we increased the bandwidth and all, they were able to do that easier for us. But do you wanna talk about the funding and how that comes? Well, you might ought to, this may be a bigger question here.
We have gotten this question, actually, it's come up again this year, the last two years. We went with the state's consortium, oh, five, six years ago. That was the, it was the most cost-efficient of the bids that were out there, and a lot of systems were not comfortable going with it because they were used to their previous providers. We've been very pleased with it, so we no longer see a revenue item for E-rate funding. Instead, it is a direct reduction in our cost for our internet services and all. And we've been very pleased with it, and we, because we don't show that revenue, some people get the idea that we are not participating and we're leaving all this money behind, but we are getting it as a direct reduction in our cost. But we, we have been pleased with that. There are changes coming about in the, in E-rate program.
Federally?
Federally, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So, we will probably stick with what we've got as long as it is available, and each of the last two years, we have close to doubled our total bandwidth at, well, this year, actually, we got a slight reduction in what we're paying for. The, the, the year before, I think we paid eight to twelve thousand to double it, and this year we actually got a, a reduction in that range to double it. I think we doubled it again this year.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's on your phone bill at home, that E-rate thing.
Yeah.
Part of the federal requirement, that funding associated with that. And when it comes down, we just found it more cost-benefit to us to have it state the, on that, to use that E-rate funding.
And it, it saved us quite a bit of money over what, if we'd gone with one of the other consort, consortium that were out there at the time.
So, is it okay to add that particular piece, I mean, that sheet? I think most of that is pretty well self-explanatory. It's just cost to maintain and, and try to keep up on that. The last one was a stakeholder involvement engagement that Mr. Eeks was talking about. Mr. Evans headed this up and speaking with others and all. So, the first one is increased communication efforts, in other words, telling our stories. He labeled it in this particular case. And so, certainly, there's, there's no particular cost necessarily related to that, but just another effort to try to track news, good news and things, so let us know what Rutherford County schools do and, and what we can do. Another thing he put in, and two, at some time, maybe freelance or contract writers. Montgomery County's not as big, how many's, how many's on the public relations staff up there? James is there and he gets care in part-time secretary, so, you know, we call upon him to do a lot of things, including zoning. You know, so, at some point, we say, well, let's get out and push the story out, much more, but forty-one thousand students and a growing system, at some point, you have to begin to look at that too, you know. So, that, that's what he's talking about there. And then additional communications training for administrators and others. So, and that's for principals and others to how to get the news story and, and that sort of thing out. Malan's here, I remember one of my trainers many years ago, don't get in arguments with people who buy ink by the barrel. So, I still remember that from probably twenty-five years ago in Warhamland. But anyway, that, that's some, some thoughts and some not large costs. The second one, communication effort, there's some more there. This is a district website maintenance and improving the school's website. And, and this becomes more and more the image of Rutherford County schools and where parents go first. I was speaking with Mike Snell this week, and typically, this time of the year, they're just inundated. You can't even, the switchboard can't handle the calls of people, what bus I ride. That's not happening this year. What's really happening is they're hitting the website, they're, they can put in their street address, and they're being able to see what the bus is, and the generations of today are so comfortable doing that that many of the questions we were getting a few years ago are being handled with our website and all to deal with it, which is a wonderful thing. That actually saves you personnel.
More people will visit a classroom's website than an actual classroom. And some of our, some of our teachers in schools do a wonderful job of keeping their classroom pages up to date and looking great, but others, because it's not, they're not, they don't come from that generation where, where technology was in their pockets, they're not as good at, at updating it. And there, there are now opportunities through technology to make it easier for them. So, it's just as easy as sending an email, and they can keep their web page looking very clean, you know, and, and, and that, that front door is what it would have become for parents when they're checking out teachers and looking for assignments and things like that. We get more and more calls now saying, why does this school have this but this school doesn't? And it's just because, you know, there's, there's a generational gap sometimes there.
And that, that tells us again that this is an extra added, time-consuming effort to do that. And so, it tells us again and again, these teachers that we like to criticize so much are doing an exceptional job. My eighth grade teacher never updated her website in her life, bless her heart, she was an excellent school teacher. But they have so much to do now compared.
And we wanna make it as easy as possible for them to do that. We don't wanna add more.
Yeah, exactly. But for them to take the time, even if you make it easy, it's still time-consuming. We wanna get stuff published. What, what about the thought of having students write? Some of the English assignments could be, you know, geared in that direction and then maybe get it published. Now, I think we oughta edit it, if you know what I mean. We don't just wanna give, you know, they can write letters to the editor if they have complaints, but we want positive stories coming out of these schools, so that's just a thought that.
It is.
I mean, what better writing assignment could you have than, you know, other than what I did over the summer break at the end of the school year? And you'll get some good feedback from those students.
If I could, let, let me give you a great example. At my conference this summer, a very dynamic speaker was talking to us, and he said, he asked us all, there were about three hundred of us, to name the Subway sandwiches that have under five hundred calories. That's one of their things we're always talking about, name them. And, you know, a couple of us got some of them, no one, no one got the full list. And then he put up a picture on the screen of the guy Jared holding the big pants up, and he said, who's that guy? And everyone in the room knew who it was. It was Jared. He lost a bunch of weight eating Subway sandwiches for five years or whatever it was. The story told everyone what they needed to know about Subway. A, a great example locally would be, we, we have a lot of people who still don't understand what Holloway High School is. They, they think it's an alternative school for behavior, and it's not. It's a, it's a chance for, it's a school that helps kids catch up who are falling behind for whatever reason. But the best story you could tell that sells that point, and, and Malan actually wrote it a few years ago, was the student who was homeless, living in his car, and he spent a lot of his free time in the library, and he ended up being a valedictorian. A homeless student became valedictorian through the Holloway High program. That tells you everything you need to know about the quality of that program without just drilling people with data because people don't, people don't understand that. And that's, so storytelling can sound like it's a lot of fluff, but actually, that's how we absorb information, is storytelling. And that's why it's important for us to be getting our story out about the great things happening in our schools every day.
Absolutely.
I'm done. I want my cell phone.
The other thing with, another prior stakeholder involvement goes direct parent notification. We have the school messenger, the new system, the iNow, we're rolling out now, the new software attendance package and all like that, has some features in it that will allow us to notify our parents and all. We're just gonna have to see how that, how, how easy that's gonna be able to use this year and how well that particular works for us. But it's our goal, we had several middle schools that purchased separately themselves last year programs to do this for parents. That's so much for people. We're hoping that the new program that we have, this one that, that's in place now, will do much of that for us, but we'll, we'll learn more about that as we come along with the year for that one. But it's certainly a strategic plan for us to make sure we maintain some kind of a parent notification system and we can, can do that. James said another community involvement with other agencies, and again. And again, this is part of marketing yourself. Public schools are gonna have to do a better job of marketing ourselves. We have a great product. Uh, it's certainly, uh, for most families, cost-effective, considering, but we gotta do a better job for that. And, and part of that's agencies and things like that, that we have to connect with and all to do, and let people know how we're connected. So, um, Mr. Evans put that one in place also. Thanks for that. Mr. Hodges, any other?
I'll open it up. Comment.
Fish tail on what you've just said, Mr. Superintendent. Um, we're, it's public schoo- public education is taken for granted right now. It's just there, use it if you want to. But we don't tell those good stories about the kid at Holloway, about the, you know, the, the students that, that go every day and make a new friend, or, or they learn a new skill, or, or they get up to grade level. Uh, when you see that child, we're talking about intervention. When that child can leave that intervention class, then you've made a, a, a great step forward. And that happens. We just don't, you know, we can't tell everything about students. We've got a privacy law, but, uh, we can, you know, we can get some, some things written and published. And schoolteachers, why not write about a group of schoolchildren? This program I never saw in the paper, and I may have missed it. I'm thinking the Avid program, was that what was presented to us from Smyrna?
Smurhan.
Yeah. And, and what a, what a great program that program is. And it goes along with this thing we're talking about, study habits. These kids are developing productive, worthwhile study habits. Uh, one of the biggest problems, I, I'm, one of the biggest problems I ever had in school was those study habits. You know, get it done, uh, go back and refresh yourself, 'cause you learn a whole lot more the second time. But you can't cram and learn much at all, can you?
Ms. Clardy?
I think over the next year, we're gonna talk a lot about revenue, uh, because we did not see an increase, uh, proportional, uh, increase, uh, to the school budget this past year. We did not see, uh, an, an increase that even kept up with our rate of growth. Uh, we see the need that is, uh, behind the, uh, the, the advancing needs in, uh, in maintenance and facilities. Uh, and I think that, that revenue is, is certainly gonna be a topic. And how we address it in the strategic plan, I think we've addressed it well. But, uh, it's something that we just have to emphasize. You know, if, if, if the cover page of this, of this strategic plan had a big dollar sign on it, it, it wouldn't be out of, uh, out of line. Uh, because we, we do need, uh, appropriate funding to be able to accomplish this. Um, some people might suggest, you know, what other school systems have done. And, uh, you know, we, we certainly should explore all kinds of possibilities. Um, I don't think that corporate, uh, partners are a bad thing, uh, by any means, uh, whether it's Verizon or Bridgestone, or, or whatever company wanted to help us. But that's happening already. Uh, we heard tonight about the AT&amp;T partnership and how we have maximized the benefit to the system, and yet it's not plastered all over the school signs and on the football fields or something of that nature. We just took all the dollars and put them to the bottom line. Uh, it not, may not have been the most sexy way of doing it, but it was the most beneficial, uh, manner of doing it. Uh, Bridgestone, a- as well as Nissan are both heavily involved in our career and technical program. Uh, so they're doing their part. Um, what we have to maintain is that we are the greater good for our community. We are the single place where the American dream exists, because you can buy yourself a better lawyer and get a reduced sentence when you get in trouble in the courtroom. You can buy yourself a better ad campaign and get yourself more sales in the free market economy. You can buy yourself more signs and possibly even get elected to public office. But you can't buy your way to a better life. You've gotta go and sit in the classroom and earn it. And we give every single citizen of Rutherford County that opportunity. And it is a unique opportunity. And, and it should be a passion for every citizen of Rutherford County that public education is well-funded, because it maintains our success for generations to come. Um, Murfreesboro City Schools has an educational foundation. And sometimes I think about that. I think we're right to say there are PTO programs, there are small little, uh, interest groups that might help out the athletic boosters here, and they do a great job scattered here and there where the passions are present in Rutherford County. It's good for people to be able to have their personal interest and fund things at a personal level. Uh, philosophically, I think we're right to not have an educational foundation for Rutherford County schools or something that is, uh, that is channeling unique streams of revenue. Revenue for Rutherford County schools needs to come through our county commission. It has, they've done a great job, but we're gonna have to find additional revenue. Um, and we're gonna have to be given that, because we've been such good stewards of that money, uh, up to this point. And we're gonna continue to be good stewards of that money. The strategic plan shows that. The last thing I've got to say is, um, I believe that we need to maintain an equal opportunity for education. And, uh, you know, that, that's not just a, a federal, uh, uh, type of statement that, uh, that everyone is not discriminated against or anything like that, but the resources that are available. Uh, we need to continue as a board to maintain a perspective that says the same thing that's happening in this part of the county is happening in this part of the county, is happening in this part of the county. And as technology and virtual classrooms and various other things give us the opportunity, uh, we need to maximize that, uh, effort to give every student, no matter where they might sit in a classroom, the opportunity to learn what it is their passions drive them toward.
Second.
Second, Ms. Clardy?
Second thing.
Well, I just, once we finalize this plan, uh, I hope as a board, as a central office, as a system, that we utilize Mr. Evans' talent, and we will make this plan known to the community, to our stakeholders, to let them know what our goals are, but also what our challenges are, and, uh, and what we're dealing with, with, uh, with, with the maintenance upkeep, well, maintenance upkeep and roofs and, and HVACs that, uh, yes, academics is, is priority one, but, but so is safety of our students, and so is the, uh, the learning environment of our students. And that, and that comes, that comes with a cost. And we have to, we have to make sure that not only our funding body understands that, but also, uh, every citizen of this county.
I had a, Ms. George took a message from a day from one of the vendors that would like to come in and talk to us about how to save money, how he had been able to save quite a bit in Montgomery County, Tennessee and all. So I did call him back, but I'd done a little research before I called him. I said, "It's interesting, we spend $1,282 per student less than the state average, and we're spending $800 less in Montgomery County now, per student." And I was, so, he, he offered a few other things, but he didn't have a lot of suggestions maybe to help us. So, I enjoyed that one.
You have something, Ms. George?
Well, uh, I always have something on my mind. As we sit here, we've gotta look at that and remember one key word in that, strategic plan, strategic. We've got a lot of good people out here. We need to be thinking about the big picture. The more detailed decisions need to be made where the action is taking place. The further away from the action that the decision is made, the less effective it is. So we, we, as we look at all of this, we, we need to keep that in mind. These people are making recommendations, and the things that we've talked about, well and good. But they got to be the big picture, and we don't need to go ill. We don't need to get sidetracked, and it's easy to get sidetracked in these things. If we, if the product coming out of our schools is what the community likes and are, and proud of, then they're going to take care of the plants that we're operating and the people who operate. I sincerely, they always have, or we wouldn't be in the position we are today, one of the better systems in the state.
I, I, I agree with you. Uh, we've been well taken care of, I think. And, uh, I got confidence that, uh, it's our job to, to try to do the best we can, take care of what we got, and, uh, put the word out there as far as the funding goes. And, uh, uh, what we get, do, you know, do the best we can. And, uh, I think this board and staff and everybody, uh, have done that over the years. And, uh, what you said, Mr. Blair, as far as the roofs, that's the biggest thing, biggest challenge we've got. And I think it's caught up with us. And, uh, uh, I believe it's one of these deals, somebody's gonna have to hand you up an extra million and a half every year to, to maintain. And, uh, uh, and I believe it'll happen. We gotta take care of what we got. Uh, brings us up to the next question, I guess, with the board. Uh, I know we wanna try to look at this thing before end of August, I guess. Uh, you know, and try to get something in place with, uh, the current board since they've been here. Uh, would it be possible, based on what you, you and your staff heard tonight?
We can put it back together, and it could be an item on one of your.
Possibly bring something back next week, or is that too early?
Uh, we can do that, or we can put it on your, one of your agendas to look at it again, whichever one you wanna do.
The only reason I, the only reason I say that i- i- in, in any board members correctly, uh, if we look at this thing, if next week's meeting, if we add it to the agenda, uh, you present us with the changes, uh, and if the board wants to take it, and we'll set, and we'll come back for another session. I'm open to whatever the board wants to do.
I'd like to see it on the 12th work session.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Does that, does that give you plenty of time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Michaels, if you'll make sure that's on there. And, uh, in that way, we have two days to, to look over it, and you can highlight during the work session. If we wanna pass it, the Thursday meeting or whatever the meeting is, we can do it. If not, we'll continue on a little further, so. Uh, but I think it's important that, uh, we try to get the document in, you know, a good position to work with, so. Anybody else have any comments?
I'd just like to say I appreciate y'all's time. Y'all put a lot of time and effort into this, and, uh, it's a lot of good information here. We just need to keep expanding on it. Like I said, get, get the word out there, get the, what we're doing good out to the public, so they see what we're doing.
Anybody else? All right, if nothing else, we're adjourned, we'll see everyone next week.